On item 8H, this is a resolution approving a MAPS-III sidewalk master plan. And we've had conversations with each of the council. I think people should be encouraged that we're planning to move forward with the concept of taking some money from the general fund to continue to build out the MAPS-III sidewalk plan. And eventually, I'd like to think this council and future councils will finish that thing out.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilman David Todd with the MAPS office. I have a quick presentation here for this master plan. Take us just a second to get it started. As I said, this is for the MAPS-III sidewalk master plan. This master plan comes to you from the Trails and Sidewalk Subcommittee and through the Citizens Advisory Board, the MAPS-III program. You previously saw it, if you remember, a couple of months ago. There were some concerns. You sent it back to the Subcommittee, and the Subcommittee has reevaluated it. It's essentially the same, but we've refined some of the estimate components of it. Just to give you a little background, if you'll recall, sidewalks are not required to be built for developments for approximately 50 years, and the absence of attention will take us some time to recover. So there's a lot of sidewalks that need to be done in Oklahoma City. Current requirements, the sidewalks are built with residential development. That's interior to the residential development, and then also for the arterial streets. And then also, commercial and office development requires new sidewalks, and that's typically on your arterial streets or at the front of the residential areas on the collector streets. Other sources of sidewalks are private development, as I just mentioned. The 2007 bond projects included $68 million for sidewalks, and that's ongoing. And then there's federally funded sidewalk projects. Real quick on the budget, how we got to the 6.8. You can see it's the 9.190 budget for the program itself, and then you can see it's broke into two phases. The construction line items there, $3.27 million on Phase 1, and then $3,574,000 in Phase 2. Gives us a total of $9,190,000 for the program itself, but then the total construction is $6,844,000. So we have $6.8 million to actually construct sidewalks. This is the criteria that the Subcommittee used. There were various items in this that were used to rank the sidewalks: proximity to schools, connectivity to schools, proximity to transit. I won't read them all, but these are some of the aspects that were looked at to rank them. And then there was a second pass that included constructability, which means, how easy is this one to construct? Will it cost too much to construct this as opposed to another one? The connection, the right-of-way issues, and then the utility issues. This was put into a spreadsheet, and numbers were created that ranked each alignment. This is the result of that criteria. So in the report, you have copies. This is just a piece of one of the spreadsheets. But this is probably the most important part of the report, because it gives you the results. On the right-hand side, in the yellow, you can see where the actual ranking is. And then you have the location of the street on the left, and then where it begins and where it ends. So for instance, halfway down there is May Avenue from Northwest 36th to Northwest 50th. And then it notes that Monroe Elementary is impacted there. It's on the east side of the street. Now, this is the main change between the last report and this report. There's two columns there. There's a column that estimates the cost of the sidewalk for that alignment at $50 a foot, and there's a line there that estimates it at $35 per foot. Since we're dealing with estimates, the $50 per foot is the average of all the bids that we've seen in recent past. The $35 range is the average of all the low bids. So what we've developed is a range of bids of where we think that the sidewalks would come in. So instead of giving us a definite line, we've got more of a range. So that gives us a little more to work with. Now, city clerk has some revisions.
I've distributed them.
Okay, so you should have the revisions. In the week since we initially submitted this, we've gone over one of the alignments, and one of them is in Ward 7, Councilman Kelly's 63rd Street. Intuitively, we all knew that there's a lot of kids there on Millwood, but we couldn't really understand why it wasn't ranking higher. But the key became that when you take mile at a time, if you take 63rd from Broadway to Kelly, there's a park, and there's some neighborhoods, and it ranked kind of mid in the program. And then when you move over to the next mile, from Kelly to ML King, again, it ranks in the mid-part of the program, because there's a school and there's some neighborhoods. But the key was that connectivity, one of the criteria that it had on there. So if you grab those two miles and link them together, it really boosted its rating. So that 63rd Street rating has moved from 61st to 23rd in the rankings. Now, notice, we've done that with several of the alignments. There's runs down Shields that go for three miles because of connectivity with certain things. There's a couple of places, I believe, on Penn. There's a piece of 44th Street that we linked from I-35 to Shields, I believe. So it's not something that we haven't done in here, linking these miles together because of the connectivity. So that's the change that you have with you. And again, here's the summary of the estimates that I explained, the $50 per foot and the $35 per foot, and that gives us the range. So the estimate range gives us between 25.8 to 36.5 miles of sidewalk.
David, I think it's important to point out as we go forward, you know, that there was a larger number that was talked about earlier, and why aren't we at that larger number? I think there's two predominant reasons. Is one, the original estimate was based upon a four-foot sidewalk, and one of the first things that the Subcommittee looked at and decided was it really should be a five-foot sidewalk. And that's not a wrong decision. It's, you know, you can do it either way, but that's a better quality sidewalk. Well, that knocked 20% off at the top on that. And the estimates, as you know, we don't do plans before we do MAPS-III, so we took some areas where we'd put some sidewalks in, primarily along section line roads out in Ward 8, where we're running pretty straight stretches of land. Well, a lot of these sidewalks we're putting in are in areas where there's more driveways. And the driveways are expensive, because to meet ADA requirements, you just can't come up to the -- you just can't say, "There's an existing driveway here." You build your sidewalk to each side of it and quit. That doesn't work. That doesn't meet ADA requirements. You've actually got to remove part of the sidewalk out to meet those requirements, or not the sidewalk, the driveway out, to meet those requirements. And then you've got to go up and down to meet a section of the driveway, and so that brought up the prices quite a bit, too. And so I think those are probably the two factors that push the cost estimates up.
Well, I have a comment about that, and a comment also about the estimates. First of all, those driveways were there when we put MAPS-III out for a vote. They didn't arise afterward.
That's correct.
We talked about doing 70 miles of sidewalks. We didn't talk about, "Or we'll do less than 70 miles because there are driveways there." We talked about doing 70 miles of sidewalks. I think we've got an obligation to find a way to do the 70 miles that we promised, whatever it takes to do that. That's what that contingency fund's for. We're making a stab at it by using some of the fund balance, but I don't know that we ought to use the fund balance for that. There's a contingency fund in MAPS-III that I think we ought to look at. Second, I mean, that's just a comment, but I think that we have an obligation to do that. As I said earlier, if the convention center came in at 60 or 40% of what we -- we're going to build 40% of the convention center, we'd have the whole MAPS Advisory Committee down here telling us to raid the contingency fund to build the convention center. And I think we have an obligation. That's a concrete, literally concrete, promise that we made to do 70 miles. We didn't do 70 miles maybe. We said 70 miles. I mean, I think turning our back on that is a mistake, a gross mistake. Secondly, then I have a question about this. On the cost estimate page, this high -- the high estimate is the average bid history. Is that the average bid made on sidewalks, regardless of whether they were accepted or not? That's just the average of the bids?
Yes, sir.
The low estimate is the average bid that was accepted, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we're now -- I'm not sure the relevance of that, David.
Well, because we didn't want to come in and just do the $50 per foot and look like we're coming in way short, but we also didn't want to come in with the other number and call that good. So we're trying to give you a range of where we think the estimates will come in.
The fact of the matter is, we're going to put a project out like this, quite like this, where we put out a bunch of sidewalks. They've always been a sundry to another project. And so we think that potentially, by doing it this way, with our focus just on the sidewalk, it may drive the price down. But we don't have any history on that. So that's, we think.
But it doesn't have to drive the price down to do it at $35 a foot, because that's what the prices have been?
Yes. That's correct.
So we think it may go lower than $35 a foot? Is that what we're saying?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying we don't have--
Oh, you hope. That's what your hope is.
I hope. We don't have history on that.
Okay.
That's the hope.
The 2007 bond sidewalks, are those four-foot or five-foot?
The bond projects will be five-foot if the sidewalk is away from the curb. If the sidewalk is against the curb, it's six-foot.
But if it's in a residential area--
If it's in a residential area, it'd be four-foot. Right.
But so if, so in 2007, we decided we were going to build five-foot and six-foot sidewalks? So why in MAPS-III did we decide we were going to have four-foot sidewalks?
I don't know if that's how the estimate was done. I'm just saying that's what will be required, is five-foot and six on the arterial--
But when we were coming up with our estimate, we're going to get 70 miles, we based it on four-foot sidewalks. Why did we do that when our 2007 bond sidewalks were five and six feet?
Arterial ones, the residential ones were four. We probably should have done five-foot.
David, when you're looking at these figures that, and this $35 a foot, is there any comparison to the stimulus money that the city received when we started these sidewalks that many people referred to as sidewalks to nowhere? In reference to the dimension, and in reference to the bids that was received, and the contracts that was let for those sidewalks, is there any comparison to the cost factor for what's being proposed now that was part of those funds that you drive around Oklahoma City and you see a little portion of a sidewalk that runs into a ditch, and that's the end of it?
I think those, again, were done in conjunction with other projects, and this is kind of a different animal. So those ran higher because of the fact that they were -- a contractor has to go to one area and work at a corner and take out a corner, and that's more non-productive work. That's a higher cost work doing that than just going and laying ribbons of sidewalks.
So it had nothing to do with using any of that information in reference to--
Yes, we looked at that, but we're not sure how applicable it is because of the way those were constructed, and we're not sure how applicable that is to what we're doing with this project.
And I'm not suggesting that we do this, but am I hearing that if we were to choose to lay these sidewalks in areas where we were just laying long ribbons of them, we might get closer to the 70--
Oh, that's right. That's correct. But that's not--
So we're making a choice--
Yes.
--here to say, "We'd rather have, at the moment, fewer miles in--
In higher-density areas.
--higher-density, more logical areas--
Yeah.
--than just laying them out and getting -- I mean--
That's correct.
We could buy 70 miles and fulfill our promise.
Say that again.
I think we could buy 70 miles of sidewalk and fulfill our promise if we laid them in just areas where all you had to do was just go flat and run a ribbon of sidewalk, but that doesn't--
That doesn't--
--that doesn't help us.
The map is virtually the map that we talked about before.
Right. Oh, I'm not--
This is not a new map.
Right. I'm not talking about the map at all. I'm just saying, if we just -- I think this is what I heard, is that if we just wanted to lay 70 miles of sidewalk, to say we laid 70 miles of sidewalk, we probably could do that within our budget. But that's not--
If you take--
If you want to make them two-foot wide, you could, but, I mean, I think we might as well acknowledge that we missed it and go and try to fix it rather than try to dance with it. As far as I'm concerned, we missed it. We promised 70 miles of sidewalks. We showed a map where they were going to be, and we're going to build 35 at best. I think we've got an obligation to try to fix it. It's not a -- I think we make more of the problem by not trying to fix it and trying to defend doing 35 than we do by trying to find a way to fix it. If you can build 35 for $6 million, $6 million is just a scratch on the side of the contingency fund. Why don't we just go ahead and build what we promised? And not -- I just, I think we--
Well, I'll answer your question, and my opinion is that I think you may ultimately be right. I think maybe the council should use contingency money to fulfill it. I just don't think we should do it here in year three of the collection. This is a lot of work for people. Let's get these sidewalks in. Let's learn along the way. I don't think we need to start spending contingency money today to fulfill it, but a year from now, five years from now--
Okay. That's fine.
I would suggest the council do that.
That's a fair answer, and I'm satisfied with that.
Your Honor, I have a question. David, I've got a Figure 6 and a Figure 7 map.
Yes, sir.
And it's got green and red lines on it. What's the difference?
Okay. Continue on the -- the red lines are the sidewalks that fall within the range of the $50 per foot estimate. And then the green ones are the continuation. If the bids come in at $35 a foot, that's the additional projects that we estimate will be available to be built. So that's kind of the band that I was talking about. That's the ones that are out there beyond the high estimate. So then if you go on to the next slide, you'll see in the turquoise, which is kind of hard to see here, but the turquoise represents all the sidewalks that'll be built with the bond program, with arterial streets that are being done. And what also isn't shown on here is, I believe it's 31 square miles of areas that will receive sidewalks with the residential program that we talked about previously. So that's not shown on there either. So there's a lot of sidewalks coming in the near years.
Okay. You mentioned the geo-bond projects, and I'm a little confused about the answer that I heard a minute ago. Will those be our new standard, five-feet sidewalks and six-feet sidewalks?
Those are our standards on arterials now. Four-feet is what we're putting in residential areas. As you recall, we're doing a lot of interior works and different section lines, and when we do those, we've been putting four-foot sidewalks in.
Right.
Why are the four-feet -- why are the four-foot sidewalks being put in? I mean, it saves money, I understand that, but--
Four-foot sidewalks is our standard subdivision, residential subdivision.
That's a good answer, but it's not, doesn't get to the heart of the matter. Why did we pick four-feet? I mean, two people walking side by side can hardly walk on a four-foot sidewalk. And if we put in sidewalks that are useless, we discourage the whole process. And I think that we need to rethink that residential sidewalk issue. I know it's going to cost more money, but if we put in something that's four-feet that's not used, then we wasted our money.
Can you bring some pictures to us and let us see what a four-foot sidewalk looks like in actual--
I can. I know that whenever you put a five-foot sidewalk in a subdivision, it starts making that area between the curve and the sidewalk really small, and people like a little more to mow and take care of it, and more green space than just the concrete. But I can certainly do that.
Okay.
David, I don't want to belabor this, but there are some areas that I still have some very serious concerns about. And when we look at the factors that was taken into consideration, and especially the schools, there's a school in Ward 7. It's the North Highlands, as a matter of fact. And there's been two incidents here within the last four months in which a student was hit by a vehicle on the way to school. And there's no sidewalks that have a real connection to the students and the traffic, and especially on Robinson that goes to the school. Now, it is one of the new MAPS projects recently completed in a very highly densified neighborhood. And if we are looking at these, you know, the connectors that school, population, and whatever else they were considering, and I think the two things that in some of these areas, if you look at the school, if you look at the neighborhood, and the lack of sidewalks, it definitely should be one of the higher-prioritized areas to consider as far as sidewalks. And I don't see that it's on the map. But then I see Memorial Road, Eastern Avenue, and Kelly Avenue. And I'm sometimes, you know, just kind of puzzled as to these areas that were selected that, in many of these, are just wide-open spaces, and there's really not a whole lot that connects for the real use of the sidewalk for -- if we're looking at the amount of money that we have, and the challenge is the number of miles that we're trying to complete, I just really think that there was, you know, when I look at this, it just don't seem like that this was vetted to the best degree in reference to where the best benefit at the present time. If the mayor says that, you know, "Well, maybe we could do this, you know, and go to the contingency fund, you know, in years to come." But would we not be better served if we took what money we have now and served the best where the, I mean, and give it to the areas where we have the most population, where we more than likely have the best use and the best need as it relates to schools and connecting to the schools and the neighborhoods?
Councilman, I understand what you're saying, and I can't answer to one specific site, because I don't have all 131 of these memorized. But unfortunately, there's a whole lot of alignments in this report that need it and have the same issues. And I've even experienced times when I'd be driving and looking and see the, what we call the desired pass, the dirt pass, and think in my mind, "Well, I'm going to -- this looks like this is really used. I'm going to go check," and, you know, find out it's 30, 40 down the list. And so you go look at the others. There's just a lot of need out there.
For example, Councilman, the Memorial Road one you referenced is because that was done adjacent to a bond project, which was our policy to do that when we had a bond project, to do the sidewalks adjacent to it. So that's why the ones from Memorial -- that wasn't a MAPS-III project. That was one that was done because of a bond project, the criteria used for that.
And I would just like to make one other comment, and I know this is not for passionate ordinance or a policy, but I would like for this to be taken into serious consideration, that as we go forward with these sidewalks, that we make sure that there's two things that don't ever happen. Number one, these benches will not be in the middle of the sidewalk. And utility poles will not be in the middle of the sidewalk. And there are some areas where, you know, the use of the sidewalk is almost impossible because you've got all these, you know, benches that's sitting in the middle of the sidewalk or a utility pole in some areas.
I understand.
All right. Yeah, Larry?
David, I know you don't have an answer for this right now, but I'd like an answer coming up, if I could. What I'm assuming is, on the back of the book, where we have all these rankings of all these different streets, that these are candidates eventually for sidewalks, maybe not in Phase 1 or even Phase 2.
That's right.
Okay. And one of the streets that's listed there is Reno Avenue. And in different sections on Reno Avenue, basically all the way from Council down to May Avenue, it calls eventually for a sidewalk to be put in on Reno. And of course, that is very clearly an arterial street. And I think I've figured out in my own mind where I was off. Then there's another stretch of road in Ward 3 between Northwest 23rd and Northwest 36th on a street called Ann Arbor. And Ann Arbor is not a section line road, but it is a -- and Jim, what do you call that kind of a street?
A hat.
A collector's?
Well, it's a major collector.
A major collector. And there is, on that street, an elementary school right on the street. And of course, that doesn't appear anywhere on our priority list for sidewalks. And I suspect that might be the problem that Skip is having over there with North Highland, that it doesn't fit on an arterial street. Is there a way, without ruining the whole logic of the program, to allow for this type of possible inconsistency to be factored in in future to determine that, hey, maybe we need a sidewalk more where there's an elementary school with 600 kids than we do along Reno, where right now, basically, nobody is walking?
Okay.
So that's--
I'll check into that.
Thank you, sir.
Can I, on the unclassing, weighted rank number 11, help me understand where the beginning and end -- it says the beginning is 34th to 35th, and the end is 38th to 49th. What is that?
I think that's a mid-block, or it's -- the sidewalk begins somewhere between 34th and 35th.
I see.
And then goes between--
Well, 38th to 49th is 11 blocks.
I think that's probably supposed to be 38th, 39th, or 48th, 49th.
That's probably tied into an existing sidewalk at that location.
It is.
So it starts somewhere between 34th and 35th and goes up to 49th?
Yes, sir. That's what it appears. But it would be mid-block. It would be mid-block stuff that connects to existing sidewalks. Here's, this is Gary Nolan with Smith Roberts. He can give you a little more detail.
It's a connection. It's kind of a two-segment part, from 34th to 38th, and then there's an existing sidewalk we connect, and it starts again and goes on. Let me see, number 11.
Okay.
It goes from 34th to 35th, and then it starts back up from 38th to 49th. It's just kind of a--
I see. It skips 35th, 30--
There's a piece that's in there existing, and we're just connecting it.
Okay.
So the goal is to have a continuous through there, blending new and the existing infrastructure that's there.
So I would just make, just a plea to, as, to really coordinate with our transit department as we move, as we start moving forward. Right now, we're starting a study to kind of look at our bus routes, and those may change. Where, you know, I know that one of the factors was proximity to transit, but that may change in the months and years to come as we get that study in. Right now, we don't have stop data, and that's one of the most important things that we'll gain from that study. Right now, we don't know where people are getting on and off the buses. So as that data comes in and we start to learn where people are getting on and off our buses, I would hope that you could coordinate with our transit department and really start to think about where the bus shelters would go on these sidewalks, and then maximizing the, or coordinating the sidewalk interface with that footprint.
As we go along, I can get in touch with Rick Kane and make sure we're still on the same page.
Okay. And then just a final comment about, you know, what Pete was talking about, shortfalls. I mean, I just want to, you mentioned the convention center, and I just want to reiterate what I was saying before, which is that we're not building potentially the convention center that we talked about during MAPS-III. I mean, there's a shortfall in multiple projects. We talked about 285,000 square feet, and our study said that you need 285,000 square feet to increase your economic impact from $25 million a year to $75 million a year. Well, we're talking about numbers like 200,000 square feet. That's basically 2/3 of what we talked about during the MAPS-III campaign. So if our policy is, we're going to go into contingency or come up with funds to get up to what we promised during MAPS-III, for 10 million sidewalks, that's one thing. For a convention center, when you're only building 2/3, that's something quite different. And so we'll have to come up with a policy for how to deal with these shortfalls, which looks like it's going to occur in multiple projects.
Just, I want to just say, the committee or the consultants, when they were going through this process, and the factors that they take, they took into consideration, did they look at all of the schools in the Oklahoma City area as it relates to the schools and the neighborhoods?
It started more with the streets, as far as four-lane arterial streets, and then looked and checked to see what schools were nearby. So we didn't start with the schools. We started with the streets, if that makes any sense. But the schools were part of the criteria. They were a major portion of the criteria.
Well, it just seems like to me that probably the one population that is going to be more and benefit the most from the sidewalks are the children. And 90% of the time, the children are going to be benefiting if they're going to school or if they go onto a playground. And to have a safe passage from their neighborhood to the school or to the playground, and that's been a part of America since day one, since there were people born and having playgrounds and having schools, is having a safe passage to get there and to come back home in a safe way. And I just think that these are some, those are the two areas that really need to be And I just think that these are some, those are the two areas that really need to be looked at again as it relates to some parts of this whole project, to make sure that we're benefiting someone that actually needs to benefit, you know, based upon the timeframe and based upon the money that we have right now. And that's one of my main concerns about this, is that everybody would like to have a lot of sidewalks, I think. But when you look at the total geographical area of Oklahoma City, you could justify in some, in some degree and say, well, you could take May Avenue, and we could say, well, from 36th Street to 50th Street, we're going to put sidewalks. But if you drive down May Avenue and stand on the street corner seven days a week, I guarantee you can almost count the number of people that are driving, that are walking in that area, on either side, the west side or the east side. But I can take you to some places where grass don't grow. And the reason why grass don't grow is because people are challenged to try to get from point A to point B and walking in that terrain, and there's no sidewalks. Or like the consultant said a few minutes ago, I think we ought to, we should also take into consideration those sidewalks to nowhere that was put in, and to try to see if we could connect those sidewalks to wherever they were supposed to been from the beginning. And I just, you know, because otherwise, we're just going to leave those out there as a gap, and people will continue to say, where is this going, why did it stop right here? When in fact, it had to have been some reason, some justification to start the sidewalk there, I would think that they would have taken into consideration that there was, you know, some traffic, some foot traffic there. And where they stopped, for whatever reason they stopped, it would tend to be at least a beginning justification to continue that to a point of destination. So that's, I'm grateful for whatever I can get for my citizens in Ward 7, but I still don't think that this is, it's a total, you know, balance as it relates to the real need of the citizens as a city as a whole, you know? And I think we're going to get ourselves in a situation where our citizens may not think that we really did the best for the money that we asked for, and, you know, from the size of the sidewalks to the real connectability to the need in the various communities. And I would just think that we could do a better, you know--
All right. Well, item 8H is to approve the plan. Ready to go? Yes. Comment your questions?
Hal McKnight.
Oh, didn't see that. We have one citizen who has signed up to speak. Hal McKnight is--
Yeah. And as Hal's coming up, I do want to point out, there's a city manager report on, that is related to this item. And the city manager report is basically a resolution from the Sidewalk and Trails Subcommittee that, you know, says they've recommended approval of this, but they've also requested that the council consider putting more money into sidewalks.
Hal, you are on the Subcommittee for Maps 3. You want to come forward?
Good morning. My name's Hal McKnight. I'm on the Maps 3 Subcommittee for Trails and Sidewalks. And Maps 3 is both an investment into our economy as well as our health and wellness. Unfortunately, our city does not test very well in national surveys. And we do know that the more trails, the more sidewalks there are, the safer city that we have and the more healthy city that we have. And the original numbers, we were going to take $9 million and hopefully construct 70 miles of sidewalks. We're now looking at, because of increased cost, about half that amount. And our Subcommittee is unanimous in trying to ask the city council for any ways that we can get additional funding to build the 70 miles of sidewalk. And I really think it's a time of the essence, as Councilman Kelly is talking about, there's a safety concern in people walking in our cities. We haven't built any sidewalks, basically, to my understanding, since 1960. This is, the great thing about this is, because of the study that has been done on sidewalks, because of Maps 3, we're realizing the great need for sidewalks. And other cities are way ahead of us in a lot of ways on this. But I feel that it's really essential, and we, through this master plan, we have been able to identify and prioritize, and I think it's an ongoing process, where sidewalks need to be. I mean, if we look at our city, right there, it's a huge surface area. So that's a problem. We only have $9 million from Maps 3 to work with. I think for future citizens and present citizens, we would appreciate any efforts the council can be in reaching this 70 miles of sidewalks as quickly as possible and then keeping that momentum going. I also think there's an obligation to the voters of this city and the supporters of Maps 3 and future Maps projects to hit that 70-mile mark as quickly as possible. Any questions?
All right. Hal, thanks.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second to approve the Sidewalk Master Plan Report. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.